Okay, everyone, welcome to the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, November 24th. In accordance with recently adopted legislation, this meeting is being conducted virtually via Zoom. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that brings us to roll call and a reminder to everyone that you have to say the city and state that you are remoting from as part of this. We're ready, Aaron, for roll call. Commissioner Bardis?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Kempner?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here from beautiful Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Smith? Marty, it looks like you're muted.
Okay, now I'm here in a bunker in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Stern?
Here from Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Trotto?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Chair Kapalansky?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Okay, that brings us to the agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda or motions to approve?
Motion to approve?
Thank you.
Last chance, any changes? Aaron, could you call the roll, please? Commissioner Kempner? Yes. Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Artist?
Yes.
Kapalansky? Yes. All right, next up are the minutes from October 27th. Any changes to those? No? Or motions?
Motion to approve? All right.
Aaron, could you call the roll, please? Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Artist?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Kapalansky? Yes. All right, communications. I saw there was something from the, was it the MAP newsletter in our packet or something like that, Aaron? Yep, yep, it was just the MAP newsletter. They're going virtual now, so it was just included in your packet for reference material. Anything else for communications? Nope. Okay. So that brings us to citizen comment. If any members of the public wish to speak during the appropriate agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you've called in. Comments can also be submitted to planning@berkleymish.net. A reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in any discussion, and we ask you to state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Is there anyone on from the public that would like to comment on a non-agenda item? Not at this time. And we haven't received any emails, correct, Aaron? No, we have not. Okay. So I will close citizen comment then and move on to our first agenda item, which is a site plan for 3180 Coolidge. Yes, this item is being returned to you this evening. It was tabled at the last meeting. So this is site plan SP 04-20, facade change at 3180 Coolidge Highway. The applicant and the owner have worked together to address the outstanding items that the Planning Commission had addressed in their, at the previous meeting on October 27th, 2020. I have included the items that needed to be addressed in the review letter that's included in the packet. Among those items were, sorry, my laptop is not scrolling ahead. Right face. A number of those items included a revised site plan showing the correct boundaries and dimensions of the site, the location of external lighting on the building, as well as wrapping the rear of the building in the same, somewhat some of the same materials that are included on the front of the building, and a material cut sheet showing the color and the sample materials that are to be used. Those items have been included and are provided to you. The applicant has also addressed one of the comments that was outstanding from the DPW's director's letter, which was the revised site plan. It does match the records that we have with Oakland County showing two separate parcels. The applicant is aware in my cover letter that there are going to be improvements to that parking area that will be needed in the future. That's not contingent upon this site plan, however. It's just something that's going to be needed to be addressed in the future before an applicant or before a tenant can occupy the space. The Planning Commission determined at the last meeting that the window coverage, while it does not meet the 40 to 80% threshold that is required by ordinance, however, it does add windows on the north and south facade of the buildings where there currently was minimal or no window coverage at all. The applicant has addressed and removed the chimney that was not included in the previous site plan. So he has addressed the future plans for that, which is to remove it completely. Let's see, now my letter's working. So anything prior to occupancy, the tenant will have to, future tenant will have to fill out a business license, signage will have to be approved at a separate time. So those things aren't under consideration this evening. And with that, we do recommend approval of the site plan, given the items that the applicant has addressed. And there's only a couple of minor items that are minor conditions that the Planning Commission could could attach to this approval. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. All right, thank you. It looks like we have the applicant on with us. Mr. Zimmerman? Mr. Zimmerman is for the second application. I don't see the applicant on the waitlist this evening. Okay, then we will go ahead and proceed with the Planning Commission's consideration. Does anyone have anything they want to say to start us off? Questions? It did look like they addressed everything that we asked them to address. So I guess if no one has questions, we could look at motions, too. No one?
Nobody wants to make a motion.
I did just reach out to the applicant and he is calling in right now. Okay, thanks. Does anyone have any questions for Aaron right now while we're waiting for the applicant to join us?
This is Mark. Can you hear me?
Yep.
In reference to the DPW letter, is it item three, it's not clear how trash will be handled or stored on site. Any comments from Aaron about that? And then as to item one, will the resurfacing question be addressed at the time a business license, an occupancy license is being considered?
Yes, I can address those questions. So in terms of the trash removal, that would be something that we would address in the parking lot as well. Those are things we would be addressing during their business license review. It is most likely that the trash for removal would be kept inside the building. That's how a lot of these smaller downtown buildings operate. They keep all of their trash inside until trash removal day. In terms of the parking lot, we would keep that as part of an ongoing site maintenance that we would want to be addressed at prior to occupancy and during the review for the business license.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, Chairman, Ms. Chairman?
Yeah.
It seems they've pretty much covered the things we discussed last month. I don't have any, I don't have any questions. We have the images of the materials. It looks like it's a bronze or a dark gray. Doesn't, either way is fine with me. The lighting fixtures are wall packs, but they're down, downlight wall packs, at least from the looks of it, and dark brick, light cultured stone. New site plan, as you mentioned. They've taken care of the backside, not of the building, but the backside of the high parapet, which is, I think, what we asked. So I'm relatively happy, other than, you know, other than the comments on the DPW letter, those which we just discussed. So I don't have any further questions or comments.
Yeah, I don't either. It looks like they've taken care of everything that we asked them to take care of, and this will be a nice improvement for the site.
Definitely.
Any motions, then?
I'll make one. Move to approve item number one, SP 04-20, is is applied for on November 24th, 2020.
Support.
Do we need to add the conditions of approval from DPW Fire and Marshal?
I take that as a friendly amendment. Yeah, I think we do that with all of these, so. I think that that language can be added to the minutes.
Yes, I can add those. Okay, I'll go down the list then and see if anyone has any additional changes to the motion. Commissioner Smith?
No, just the DPW items is what I'd be concerned about.
Commissioner Patterson?
Nothing to add.
Commissioner Kempner?
No changes.
Commissioner Stern?
Didn't add.
Commissioner Bardis?
Nothing to add either.
Commissioner Richardson?
Nothing further.
And Commissioner Trotto?
Okay.
And nothing for me either. So Aaron, could you please call the roll on this one? Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Artist?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Kapalansky? Yes. Okay, you can let the applicant know. We look forward to the changes on the site. All right, next up is site improvements at 3082 Coolidge. Yes, I'd like to reference my map letter. The applicant came before you last month, sorry, not last month, back in May, and requested approval for a facade change. The, as you recall, they're updating the site and they're updating the facade of the building to be a little bit more modern. There were a couple of conditions on that in, on that approval. So in the ensuing weeks and days, I met and talked with Mark Zimmerman of Zimmerman Designs, who was the applicant, and he noted that in ensuing conversations he had with the owner of the Vibe Credit Union, that they decided they wanted to look at reconfiguring the parking area, adding some landscaping, changing the maneuvering lanes, adding some parking islands, and et cetera. During the course of her conversation, excuse me, the applicant noted, and we noted, that by the changing the configuration and moving them from a perpendicular parking space to an angled parking space and adding the islands and whatnot, that they were going to be losing parking spaces. Given that they were at their threshold of their requirement, the parking ordinance prohibits the removal of any parking spaces that would diminish your, or where you would not meet your requirement. So I gave you a little bit of background in here. So the applicant decided to request a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals at that time, and the Zoning Board of Appeals did hear that request, and in the course of their conversation, they decided to table that request in order for the applicant to pursue an alternate design or work with removing one or two of the teller spaces located within the building so that that way they could meet their parking requirement. It was noted that the demonstrating a practical difficulty for, or a hardship for granting that request was going to be very difficult. So the applicant then decided to wait until the ordinance amendment that we had been working on for the parking modification during site plan had been fully adopted through the Planning Commission and the City Council in order before they returned to this project. So that is why this has taken, has taken some time. We needed to get that ordinance on the books and fully adopted before this, this part of the project could be brought to you. So that is the crux of what he is asking for. There is a request for a reduction of three parking spaces. The spaces would be removed in order to provide for additional landscaping on the site that would add to the aesthetic appeal of the site and of the new building. The, there are a couple of items here that are highlighted and underlined, just in terms of the landscaping material that they're now using. I've already discussed the Bradford pear and the invasive nature of that plant or of that species. So the applicant has already decided and agreed that they will find an alternative tree species to use. So really what we're asking, or what the applicant is asking for, is not only to look at these, this project, but to look at a partial modification request. This will be the first one that the Planning Commission has looked at. So I understand there's going, there's bound to be questions and discussions, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Okay, thanks. And then we have Mr. Zimmerman here for the applicant. Did you have anything to add?
I think, Aaron, let me see if I can make myself visible. I'm visible to me. I don't know what's showing up where you put.
We can see it.
I can see it.
Good deal. Aaron did a very good job of covering the essence of the project. Really, since we were going through an extensive update to the building, we just got into a discussion with upper management about why stop there? Let's take a look at the site. There hadn't been modifications or improvements made to the site in quite some time. And so in talking about that, we also discussed ways that we could improve vehicular flow and pedestrian safety in the area. And so, and in addition to that, wanted to see if we could enhance the site, basically, since it's east of the building and south of the building, it's nothing but solid asphalt and impermeable area. So our goal to, besides come up with a better flow that functioned well for us, and made the experience of visiting the bank and doing business at the credit union. We also wanted to see what we could do in the way of enhancing the site, introduce soft skate and bring things more into alignment with some of the efforts that the DDA has been spearheading.
Okay, thanks. We'll let you know if we have any questions. Does anyone have any questions to start off?
I have one for the moment. Is this parking lot in a shared parking? Do they have a shared parking agreement?
Great question. They have no formal shared parking agreement. There, I believe, is a business to the south that occasionally uses the parking lot. They've been asked from time to time to not park there, but these days, the branches closed. They buy appointment only due to COVID. So but the short answer is actually no, there's no formal shared parking agreement.
That's it for me right now. Okay, thanks, Lisa. Other questions?
Ms. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman, it looks like the drives are all one-way now, and that's fine. It makes sense, you know. You've got some crossing traffic as vehicles coming from the south parking area go north to the Coolidge. Now they're crossing at the, at the, at the east entry there on the drawing. You have traffic crossing the incoming traffic. Now, this isn't, this isn't the Disney World parking lot, but do you foresee any, any issues with, with, with crossing traffic? There's going to be some conflicts, and do you get that much traffic in this parking lot that you believe there may be an issue here?
So they, great question. They have, they have that condition now, and they've been living with it for some time. But it's more, it exists, I won't exaggerate, it just exists in the way of painted lines and asphalt at the moment. And so with the amount of traffic that they get, and this is one of those things where, you know, it's maybe the time to mention it, as they go forward and membership, it's basically coming in the form of folks who do electronic banking, 25% of what their new accounts are basically made up of. So I guess I could see a moment where somebody has to yield, and that would be the car traveling north before that turn out of the lot. So I think it's a situation that, in many ways, I think it's improved because currently you could pull in from Coolidge, either from the south or the north, and then make that left-hand turn that's south in the parking lot. So we kind of, what we're trying to do is direct traffic in more of a one-way manner. Those going to the drive-through sort of proceeds right ahead, and those in overflow parking. That, that row that's on the south side of the lot is really the last to fill up with respect to to the membership. So it's not overflow, that's not fair to call it that, but it's really the last thing that sees parking.
Does, at busy times, I don't know what your, what their busiest time is, probably Friday afternoon. Is the parking lot ever full?
No, their, their peak hours are, let's see if I get this straight. It's the first and the third of the month, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from noon to three, and then again right around closing time.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, they never fill the lot and never have. They've operated business at this location for 10 or 11 years now. And the closest they get to full is, is when a lot of people who actually are in adjacent properties begin to fill up the south side of the lot. So that's something we'll have to, I guess, contend with and work out as neighbors often do, so. It's just one of those things to monitor as, as we go forward.
Okay, okay, I, yeah, I guess I agree. I don't, I don't think it's a huge issue, and you have been living with it, but you, you said, you did say directly that everything's painted now, and there's another out. You know, they get clogged up, people can go around, and living on Earlmont Road, we of course don't like people exiting, any more people exiting on Earlmont than we have to, than they have to. But okay, hopefully it's not an issue. I can't predict it. I don't, I don't, I don't know. And like I said, this isn't a, this isn't a huge parking lot. It's not, it's just, I don't see there's that much traffic. I have a question or two on the photometric plan. What are the pole heights along, I see a, on the south side, there's a, I guess it's L1, it's kind of hard to read here. What's the pole height there?
Yeah. I believe, that's an existing pole that we're changing the head on, so.
Okay.
I want to say it's maybe 35 or, it's a, it's a tall one. It's about, probably about 30 to 35 feet.
Okay. Oh, so it's existing light standard?
It said 25 feet, Marty.
The base, the pole remains, and it gets a new LED.
But you are reusing the existing pole?
We are using the existing pole, although if I looked at my crystal ball and thought about the CEO for a minute, he would probably say, what's that doing there? Change it out. So that's, we've had the potential, I think, to lower that at this point. We're definitely replacing all the electronics. If you made it a condition of site plan approval, consider it a new pole.
Well, I'm not, I'm just worried that isn't a taller pole than it is now. There's some slight bleed over of light, at least according to the photometrics plan, but that is another commercial property to the south and and I noticed on the east side, very east side, you have some pretty high photometrics, and they stop zero at the wall. Now, are those, those light fixes are mounted on the wall, correct?
Correct, those are, those are wall packs.
Okay, that explains that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. We have had cases in the past where it doesn't go from 18.2 to zero in two feet, so, but, you know, on a pole. But as long as they're wall packs, that's not a problem. I have no problem with changing the pole. I don't see to make it a requirement. I, the only requirement I would say is don't make it any taller. If you can make it shorter, that'd be great. And this, there's no other changes on the elevations, the building elevations you're making?
So.
From what we approved a few months ago?
So we had a discussion about window coverage and what could we do to try and get us closer to the 40%? So the changes that were made, if you look at the elevation of the west side of the building, essentially what we have is, we have the same composition. We've got four full-height windows, and then we have what used to be kind of a ribbon window that had a sill, maybe 18 inches or whatever. We're basically taking that down to the floor, and we're taking it as high as we can go, given existing structural steel conditions. So we've done as much as we could to juice that up a little bit. We were able to get to almost 30%. And, and then we're just kind of, that's where we are. Part of the the north-west corner of the building is the existing server room. That's a room that won't get a window and should never have a window. So it's kind of a sensitive room, and we've done the best we could with what we have to work with there. So that's the change. We probably added another five or, I'm going to say, eight percent of coverage. I think I included some calculations with the submitting.
Well, I do see quite a bit of new glass on that west. I'm looking at your old plan here on the floor, and I do see quite a bit of new glass on the, on the west elevation. Appreciate, I think, the Planning Commission and the city appreciate the effort to add add some more glass on there. It's not the front, but I think we've, we were, we were generally okay with it, but I'm glad you made the effort to add some more. That's the only change. we were generally okay with it, but I'm glad you made the effort to add some more. That's the only change, um, the, the only real change on the elevations, right?
So the other thing that was, um,
The other thing.
One other thing. Um, it's as part of the, uh, site improvements, uh, modifications, um, we, what we've done with the canopy, the canopy originally, I'm talking about the drive-through canopy now, uh, to the east of the, uh, building. Um, it was an affair that basically just covered the three drive-through lanes. And what we're doing is now we're reskinning that and, um, rather than just have a, uh, a, call it a bridge that enclosed the pneumatic tubes from the, uh, drive-through teller station. The canopy itself is, uh, the full width, it's full width, um, slams into the east, uh, elevation of the building. So what goes on there is there's a little more, I guess, roof material at that point and it's roof above what is currently, um, concrete flatwork, which is in kind of poor shape that'll be replaced. So, so that it, it, the, the change in elevation is, is very difficult to pick up, uh, in a drawing. So.
Well, I, I see it as a definite improvement over what was, was there. I see you also clad the, um, the existing steel columns that were painted before. You're cladding them in, it says what, metal panel A?
Sure. So we're, um, the main, uh, body of the, uh, building is, um, metal panel, um, where it doesn't remain brick. And so the canopy gets clad with brick and then rather than have, uh, eight by eight steel pipe columns, we're dressing them up a little bit and putting, putting that same material on the columns, making it a little more substantial. It kind of pulls it more into a line with, um, the ground up new builds that we've done for Vibe and some other communities.
Okay. Well, I, I, I personally see all those items as, as improvements. Uh, I just happen to notice the elevations looked a little different. So I just wanted to bring that. I don't know if anybody else noticed that, but, uh, uh, and you moved the sign off of the high point of the canopy.
We, we did. Um, so we have a pylon sign, um, most submit per permit and go through that process of when the, when the time comes. Uh, I submitted a, a sketch of a sign that's, um, sixty inch diameter with a, um, uh, not a print base, but a monument base, basically. Um, and that, that sign will basically sit, um, just north of the curb cut, uh, into the, um, parking area.
Okay. So that, that, that ground sign will take the place of this facade sign above the canopy.
Yeah, that, that guy is gone. Um, and then we currently have a wall sign on the west elevation of the building that will be relocated to the north elevation of the building.
I missed that. Okay. So it was on the west.
It's an existing, uh, existing internally elevated sign. Yep. And it moves around the corner.
Okay. So that sign is moving over here where it's dotted in.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I asked because there's, there are substantial changes. I, I, I personally, uh, don't think they're, they're bad changes. They're good changes. But I just wanted, you know, to let everybody know that there are changes, uh, to the elevations. So, um, unless anybody else has an issue with them. Um, Ms. Chairman, does that have to be part of our motion that we've noted and accepted the, if we do accept them, that, that, uh, these elevation changes?
I would think, yeah, that would be a good idea to include it.
I'd like to hear if anybody else had any issues, any, if anybody has any issues with those changes.
No issues from anyone?
I think they're good changes myself.
Yep, I would agree.
Okay. Uh, I think those are all the comments I had. Um, yeah, those are all the comments I had. So, thank you.
I, I have one question. Has the DDA reviewed them?
Yes, the DDA did review and they included their, their letter under separate cover. So it's included in, in your packet. Yep.
And they are supportive.
They were, yes. And Jennifer Finney, uh, the DDA director is here this evening and she can answer any questions, but, um, you know, the, the overall improvements to the, to the site, uh, will greatly enhance the, the Coolidge corridor. So the DDA was, was in favor.
Thank you.
So. Oh, go ahead, Lisa.
Um, I just have a couple of comments, um, about the parking modification. When we were doing our walking tours, one of the things that I, I noted then and, and probably have just noted in, in walking around town, um, is that I, I think our banks tend to be, uh, we demand more parking than they really need these days. Um, I think everybody, most people are, are virtual banking. I, I haven't seen my bank, the inside of it in like three years, I think. Everything is on my phone. Um, and my son has an account at this bank. So before he was driving himself, I was driving him to like make deposits or what have you. Um, and we went at all different times on all different days, whenever it worked with his schedule. We never had a, I mean, like we always were able to park right by the front doors for him to go in. Parking was never an issue for us. Um, so I feel okay, um, with the parking modification.
Other comments or questions?
Uh, it's Greg. I, I agree with Lisa. I think our banks are you, um, over required maybe. I, maybe that's not the word, but I, I, I'm with Lisa. I haven't seen the inside of my bank in, I don't know, long, long time. Uh, everything's online now or the ATM. The only question I have, and maybe it's just my ignorance of reading this plan, but where do the tubes come into the bank from the drive-through? Is it that first teller booth? I, I was just trying to figure out where the tubes go. Like there's not like a visual window. Is, are they gonna be electric tellers?
So, great question. Um, right now, the way things are, they have three drive-through lanes, um, and the way they operate is they, um, the tubes go vertically up into the canopy, then travel horizontally. Um, so they're hidden in the structure of the canopy, uh, that's above the drive-through area. So they used to be underground. They flipped them over to overhead, uh, about ten years ago, uh, when they did a, a couple of minor improvements. So that's where they will stay. Um, they will always be overhead. So.
Yeah. So there, you don't actually see the teller then through the window?
No, you don't. Um, you, you see the teller just like we're looking at each other. It's all.
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, yeah. I, I, my, my bank had that in, in the one location. I was just curious how Vibe was. I, I, I guess I don't belong to Vibe, but I, I just looked in for a window to see, you know, the teller, but, um, I guess it's more digital.
Yeah, we've gone back and forth on that one and, and some of the new, none of the new branch builds have the window. They kind of debated, gee, it'd be nice to lay eyes on an individual apart from seeing them on a screen. And then ultimately, when you get to the end of the discussion, it's, we like it just fine with the monitors and everybody, our members are getting used to all of that. And that's the world we live in now. So, so that's, that's the way they're doing it. And I think they've, I think they've had that kind of an arrangement here for a number of years. I'm not sure how long. Probably wouldn't surprise me if it's been like that for going on six or seven years.
That's all I had. Thank you.
So this is Mark. Um, how many bicycle parking spaces exist at the building right now?
Um, wherever, none right now. They don't have a bike rack at the moment. So.
Um, you, you, we, we are no position to, to a quick pro quo, but I'm just wondering if you would, uh, consider installing, uh, bike racks in exchange for losing those three spaces.
Mark, if I may, there's a bike rack indicated off the southwest corner of the building.
Right. There has been a bike rack there and, and in the past. I'm just wondering if there's any room to add a few more spaces.
Okay.
Um, or not. So we could probably hunt and peck and find something. I'm zeroing in on an area that's kind of close to the, it's the, it's more like the east side of the building where there's a paved area. Um, uh, it's, you kind of want those things to be closer to the street or the sidewalks and the entry rather than toward the back of the building.
Correct.
And we're a little jammed given landscape, bike rack, signage, yada, 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 uh, up front. Um, we'd have to, if we did it, we'd have to increase the amount of paving and flatwork, which I'm trying to take it in the direction.
Well, I don't know if I, I'd want you to do that. Uh, I, I, I belong to Vibe and I, I actually ride my bike there much more than I drive a car there. And, uh, so I, I like, we like to encourage that kind of thing in Merkley too. But I, I, not at the expense of, uh, additional impervious surface, I don't think. Particularly if you've already got a bike rack there.
Right. I, I could say this, but I'm not sure that it's appropriate for visitors and membership. There's all kinds of, uh, because the canopy will now extend all the way to the building. And because we have our compressors and the transformer from E T E and a number of other things going on back there's a fair amount of concrete flatwork behind the building. It's, um, so some that could be put back there, but it's, um, I'm not sure that that's really appropriate. But I guess all I'm saying is the flatwork exists. You could install something. It wouldn't be very available for the public.
You don't, you don't see any possibility of putting a rack near the main entrance that, oh.
We could do that. It, it, but it would, I would be concerned about, um, bikes being in too close proximity to the entries. So, um, the, the actual approaches to the building, I'm kind of looking at it right now. It's only an area that's, um, um, there are these two pyramids, if you will, or two triangles. And on the long leg of the triangle, um, they're only about twelve feet. So it's not a lot of area there. There's maybe just a little more than a hundred square feet each kind of in half. So we really only have about a fifty square foot area. So we would have to keep them out of the way so that somebody, the trippers stumble over one. Um, I think you'd have to add another fifty or a hundred, seventy-five, whatever the number is. Doodle around and find something, but you would have to add more, I think, paving.
Well, it, it, it's just, uh, my idea. I don't, I, I, I don't think I want to push it to, given your remarks.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, if I may, the only, the only open paved area is at the very south, uh, south wall at the east end. There's some, uh, they have some no parking stripes. If Mr. Richardson, I know that's kind of far away from the entry. But if you look at the site plan, there's a paved area there already, which are gonna remain paved. Um, there's an opportunity. Um, you also have those community bicycles on the north, the north side on Earlmont Road.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah. I wouldn't tell anybody, but you can lock your bike to, to one of those things if you wanted, but, um, um, there is opportunities here if, if they feel the need to do it.
Okay.
Okay. I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not gonna pursue, uh, the suggestion unless the board wants to, but thanks for the information.
Other comments from anyone?
Um, yeah, I had a, a question. Is the, um, I don't see anything on the plan regarding the, uh, brick fence or the brick barrier wall along the back. Is that, I don't know if that's, it looks like it's within the property line, but is that something that's gonna be changed? Or is it just remaining the same color and material, which basically match the building now?
Currently that wall is, uh, it steps from maybe fourteen at the low point, might, might even be a little longer than that, forty-two inches. And it, at its tallest point, which is about midway through the, uh, on the east wall, extreme east wall. And then it continues on the south wall, then continues east again at what I call the elbow of the site. Um, that's all six feet high. Here and there, there is the need to do some replacement of tuck pointing and replacement of brick that's missing. There's a soldier course. It's a double wide brick wall and it's missing some bricks in a few locations. And we also had a contractor take a look at a section of the wall that have, it's out of plumb. We haven't decided what to do about all of that at the moment. And I touched base with the, with the, uh, facility manager of the building who's, and I asked him, what's the story with all that? Have you noticed if that's a stable condition or is it worsening? And he says, well, I think it's just, it's just out of plumb and there it sits. So it's the kind of thing we don't necessarily need to address. I'm referring to the, uh, part of the wall that's, that's, um, tipping slightly onto, and it is on, it's all on Vibe's property. It's leaning a little bit towards Vibe, Vibe's property. At this point, I'm more inclined to leave it than, and, and just do the minor repairs and, and, and go from there.
All right. Thanks. Yep. That, that was my only question.
Other questions?
Sorry, I do one more.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner Bart.
What, um, I, I, and I didn't see this, uh, I don't think in scanning the material the other day, but what is the actual math on the, um, parking spot reduction? Like, um, I did see thirty-nine, I think thirty-nine spots now are being provided.
Yeah, I, I think they're looking for a modification of three spots.
Three.
Three and then what, what was, what was it before and after, I guess? That's, that's, I was just curious.
The number required and the number proposed?
Yes.
Do you have that handy, Aaron?
Yeah. Hold on one second. Let me just, uh,
I think, I, I think I did see that then.
Yeah, it's on one of the pages of the site plan. Hold on.
Site plan two point one.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, thirty-nine included.
Sorry, just taking a while for my computer to.
If I may, um,
Yes.
Do it sort of by ordinance, um, for the use. Based on the building footprint, we have a requirement for nineteen. Then we have six tellers and, uh, the requirement for three stalls for the six. And then strictly speaking, we have two ATMs, although one is a drive-up, um, but we provided slots for each of them, which got us to, I think thirty-nine. And then we provided the bike rack, which gained us a credit of two. Now we're back down to thirty-seven, if I'm still, uh, accurate about that. And what we're requesting is, uh, uh, three all credit for the modification.
And per the ordinance that was recently adopted by city council, the planning commission has the authority to modify up to ten percent of the requirement. So three parking spaces falls within that, uh, at the, at the maximum of that threshold.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. I just wanted to make, I did that real quick, but I wanted to make sure I did that right as well. It was, uh, like, yeah, it was the decimal. So it was under the decimal of ten percent. Thank you.
Any other comments or motions?
Well, Ms. Chairman, I can make a motion if, if no one else wants to.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith.
Um, uh, I would move that, uh, to, uh, approve uh, site plan zero three dash two zero, um, with the minus three parking, the three parking space variance. Um, and that's what we're really here for. So, uh, it doesn't say on, on this, uh, on our sheet what the variance is, but I'd say we'll give them parking modification to reduce it three spaces. And I would also like to, uh, in some way acknowledge the fact that there are some modifications on the elevations. Uh, 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 different than what we had back in whatever it was, May or June when we saw this before. So I'd like that to be part of the motion and I think I have no problem with the. So I'd like that to be part of the motion, and I think I have no problem with the elevations revisions as they are. And then also, of course, they need a a they need a sign permit and all those other things that we. Uh and any other thing that comes up with the um the uh uh D P W. So I guess that's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so I will go around and ask for any modifications, Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Patterson?
Coming.
Commissioner Kempner?
No changes.
Commissioner Stern? Commissioner Bardis?
No changes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Uh no changes.
Commissioner Trotto?
No changes.
And I don't have any modifications either, so uh Ms. Luton, could you call the role, please?
Smith?
Yes.
Stern? Stern? Oh, yes. Trotto?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Kepplansky?
Yes. Okay, congratulations, we look forward to those changes.
Outstanding, thank you.
Thanks. All right, we are moving on then to our discussion of side yard projections. Um Darren, do you want to introduce this item? And I was a little bit confused, I don't know if anyone else was. And you had a question, I think, um at the end, and I was confused as to what you needed our exact input on for that one. Bless you.
Bless you.
So uh yeah, this item is coming back to you um for further discussion um related to projections. And I provided you with um uh some sample language here, just to kind of modify. Um as we discussed in our previous meetings, um chimneys and and other sorts of projections are are not to be. Separated or not to be um regulated separately, but uh one projection is good as, is as good as another. In in a basic nutshell, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear um in in our ordinance moving forward. So what I have drafted here um is just a little bit more clarification. Uh it's all hidden, it's all highlighted in red. So projections without fun foundations may include such things as fireboxes, bay windows and other types of cantilevers. I wanted to make sure we also included second story cantilevers in that. Um projections with foundations such as brick or masonry fireplaces shall be permitted to extend not more than the two inches. So um whether it is projecting as a um. Cantilever shadow or fireplace box or a bay window, or it is going to be a brick or masonry fireplace. It is allowed to project or extend into the setback up to um two inches for every one foot of width of the side yard setback. And not more than three feet into the required front or rear rear yard. The only thing I wanted a little bit clarification on is because. We have looked at the total of all projections into a given yard shall not exceed thirty percent of that wall surface. Um so with the sh- um cantilever fireplace boxes, they are a set dimension. Whereas the masonry ones go all the way from the foundation all the way to the roof. So the um projection into the side yard is going to be very different from a masonry fireplace to to a box fireplace. Does that make, does that make sense?
I mean, as far as, as far as it not, as far as it being cantilevered off the structure instead of going all the way down to the ground?
Mm-hmm, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that we we looked at that and made sure that um if we wanted to add a little bit. Or give a little bit more leeway for those masonry fireplace uh chimneys um projecting into into the side yard, front or rear. Or if you wanted to stick with the the straight thirty percent um across the board.
Uh I don't have a problem thirty percent, and the reason why, I mean, you know, thirty percent of a wall surface is almost one third. Of the walls, total surface, that's pretty generous. Um so uh and and as we discussed years ago, if this is the same language, it looks like it's very similar. Um you know, that's a lot of the surface area of a of a of a structure. So, you know, you pick up a few feet if it goes all the way down to the foundation, so be it.
Yeah, we don't have as many of the masonry fireplace chimneys um being constructed now. It was just a way to to make sure that we have thought about that um for any future design, because um. We don't want to be coming back and looking at this next year, because now masonry fireplace chimneys are the thing to do, so. Just want to make sure that we're we're looking at at everything that could could come our way, so we don't have to.
Yeah, I'll just repeat, I mean, thirty percent is pretty generous for allowing projections that affect a neighbor. So, well, you know, you figure uh, you know, uh if it's a five-foot setback, we're allowing them to uh uh extend. Ten inches, if I read that correctly, for thirty percent of the wall surface, that's pretty generous. Regardless of what it, where where the projection is or what the projection is, that's just my opinion.
Yep, that was just something we hadn't, we hadn't touched on last month, so um given that we have some time, I wanted to make sure that we we had that fully, fully addressed.
Did I explain that well?
You did.
Okay.
All set, Marty?
Oh, I'm all set, yep.
Okay. Anyone else? I I agree, thirty percent is is good, I think. Does everyone else agree? I'm assuming, since there's, everyone's kind of quiet tonight.
I agree, I'm good with thirty, I I'm good with the added defining, I I'm I'm good with the. Projections.
I have no problems with it, the question I have is, is this coming up often, or is this something that we're just doing as busy work?
Well, it it's not busy work, we're we're making sure that things are clear for developers and and residents. We we ha- this question has come up a couple of times and there have been a couple of instances. This really stemmed from from uh an interpretation from a building official that chimneys are not considered a projection and that they can encroach as much as. That there there is no stipulation to how much they can encroach into or project into a setback. So uh this is providing clarification to that um that interpretation that was done years ago to make sure that we are. Developing these sites and allowing the construction of these single-family homes um in accordance with the intent of the ordinance. So providing this clarification will make it so that all all structures are regulated the same. So I wouldn't classify that as busy work.
Okay. And remember, remember, everybody, this is purely into the setback, I mean, people can have projections all they want. But this is, this is thirty percent of the facade uh into the setback. Now, you you figure a two-story home or someone adds a a a second story in their home. And they pro- they want to project that whole second floor into the setback, that's about fifty percent, forty-five, fifty percent. So people can have all the projections they want, instead of a flat slab of elevation, this is into the setback. So, you know, I just hope everybody understands that, that we're allowing, and again, I'll say it again, thirty percent is very generous.
Yeah, that's a good point, that this is not limiting the number of projections you could have, it's just limiting how they impact the setback.
I I just have one question, with the thirty percent being generous, should we, would you consider lowering that? Or is thirty percent about the right number, Marty?
Um I don't recall how we came up with a thirty percent, but I'll go back to my example of a second floor. You know, not considering, you know, the first floor down to grade, but if you do, you know, you can project the whole third, second floor out and you're about forty-five percent of the facade. So, you know, we, you know, okay, so at that time, and I'm I'm trying to remember, it's been a long time. Uh you got bay windows, you got chimneys, you got second floor, or some people, the the landing of their stairway sticks out of the side of the house. We came up and we we went back and forth in this way back when it was developed. And uh thirty percent seemed like a good number, and I don't, I don't see any reason to change it. I I don't recall exactly how we calculated, but I know we went back and forth. I don't know if Mr. Richardson was there at the time, uh but um uh I don't see any reason to change it. And the reason I say it's generous, I'm not saying it's too much, I'm just saying it's really not limiting people. You know, other than someone who wants to extend their whole second floor out, and that, I don't think that's fair to their neighbors. So.
Yeah, I think I had just joined the planning commission when this change was made, I do remember all the back and forth. Uh it was uh a compromise that was considered a reasonable. A a reasonable, maybe even compromise is the wrong word, but just a consensus developed that it was reasonable. And uh I don't, uh unless there's been some blowback from the community, from neighbors complaining or what have you. Um I see no reason to to revisit this uh figure. Um I'm not aware of it, I'm not aware that this has caused, this has caused any problems.
Er- Erin, has it, has there been any problems, or is it just a matter of the interpretation?
It's caused um concern for a couple of neighbors who haven't liked the interpretation. That the chimney is considered um is not, was not considered a projection and whatever. So um given that uh that interpretation had been done so many years ago. We just felt it was time to to look at it a little bit more carefully and make sure that we're we're still on the same page. So this provides a little bit more clarification for those, for those individuals who who were having some issues with it.
And 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 by by including the chimney, it's actually effectively more restrictive.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if, without getting terribly nitpicky, whether the the complaints pertain to projections. Which would actually exceed what we're proposing here, do you have any idea?
It's gonna be more restrictive, but it'll, it'll require developers to look at their projects a little bit more carefully. Um and a little bit more thoughtfully and and um. You know, thirty percent uh of an entire wall is, or of an entire side of a of a building is 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 quite a a lot. When you look at strictly a fireplace box chim- uh chimney area. Or a cantilever for a bay window or some, something of of that nature. So I I don't see a a necessary problem with it, I just wanted to make sure we had something that was clear to developers, to residents. On how we regulate these, so that there isn't um confusion or pushback about an interpretation that was done. Fifty years ago.
Uh what I was asking was, in those particular case where those complaints were made, do do the uh ex- do the uh. Projections extend beyond what we're proposing here?
Yes, they do.
Okay, well, yeah, all right, thanks. Uh I'd reiterate, I don't, I don't see a problem with these limitations.
Aaron, I just had one question about the the actual write-up portion. Um I'm in agreement with everything we've been discussing, um the only thing is, when I read it. Um that's that last sentence of the first paragraph, it's not clear to me that that's inclusive of with and without foundations. Um and I think that's the intent, right, it's thirty percent of all your projections with or without foundations.
Yeah, so.
Right, okay.
Right, and that was part of the question I wanted to to discuss, so yes, the with the first paragraph exclusively discussing. Um projections that don't contain a foundation, if we wanted to limit that to thirty percent and then have those with a foundation be something else. Um but that can be, that will be tweaked um a a little bit for. I want to say for next month, but which is really only in like two and a half weeks, because we're meeting on the fifteenth. But that'll be tweaked for you to to look at in a little bit more detail next time.
What if we added the word um total projections given yard shall not exceed three percent of that wall's entire surface area? Would that clear it up? It's clear to me, but I mean, you know, I I've been looking at this for a long time, so.
No, the uh the surface area part is not what um I was questioning, I was just questioning the distinction between foundations and no foundations. And m- making sure that it's clear that we're talking about all projections. I guess now, now that we've come to that, you just, you define, you define the projections in red, which is really great, but the total is still. Regardless of the foundation.
Right.
Yeah, we won't be able to, I mean, we wouldn't be able to set a public hearing for next month uh for the December meeting, just because things are um the way the the dates fall. So um I'll have that finalized and we can give one last, one last look. And then um if you're comfortable on the fifteenth, we can set the public hearing for the January meeting and get it all, get it all finalized.
Thank you.
So generally, it looks like everyone is okay with with things as they are then. Yes? Okay, so thanks for your work on this, Aaron, and we'll look forward to the, to setting the public hearing. Um next up is our continued discussion of exterior appliances. What what do you want us to focus on this time?
Well, this time I brought you some uh draft language, so um. You know, we got into the discussion about landscaping, screening, will that work, will that not? Um kind of a, oh, how would we do this, how could we do that? And I thought it would be um best to, the best way to steer the conversation would be to actually look at some language and be able to. To pick it apart rather than kind of talk about, well, what about this, what about this, and in these cases, blah blah blah. So um I've provided you some very, very rough, rough um language. The two exterior appliances that we've been talking about in 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 depth have been the the air conditioning unit and a generator. So those will be defined a little bit more clearly, either in this section or we can add it to the, to the entire definition section at the beginning of the zoning ordinance. Either one, um but then we're looking at the location. So um we've separated it into a residential and to a non-residential. Um where, and then we've kind of separated them out. So um generators are to be located in in the rear yard and at least six feet from any, from the side property line. Um they're permitted to be in the side yard under the following conditions. Uh that they must be, you know, and part of the discussion that we had last month was wanting to affix a um. A setback number to to where these A C units can be located. Um so I've used the uh eighteen inches from the side property line. Um twelve feet from the adjacent dwelling, so this would work in those cases where um you're on a small residential forty-foot lot. And the house is right at the 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 setback line. So you only have five feet from from the house to the property line, but then your adjacent neighbor has their driveway. Which is about ten feet, ten feet wide, so this would provide at least twelve feet from the adjacent dwelling. Um the unit must be screened therefore on three sides by an opaque fencing or landscaping. And this would be a requirement to be at least four feet in height from the grade. So like we kind of discussed last month, it would prevent people from planting um a dense row of of hedges. Or put putting some flowers and thinking that that satisfies the screening requirement. And then I made it explicit that chain link fencing is not permissible as a screening material for these types of appliances. To prohibit um anyone from putting those types of, that type of fencing, thinking that they would um act as a screen buffer. When that's not the intent of what we want to do. Um moving on, I added a section for res- non-residential. So this gives um direction for developers um for any exterior appliances at grade and also at the rooftop. Um one thing that we discussed a little bit more on the rooftop was just the screening materials um on a commercial building. So we want to make sure that those exterior appliances are not visible from the street. And that the screening material is consistent in the color, the materials, design and the overall aesthetic of of the building to which they're fixed. So that way um it just looks like the building is is more or less a parapet, it's just heightened. Um and it doesn't look like it's anything outside of what should be there. I also added a line for generator testing, so that way. I also added a line for generator testing, so that way the tests won't be done at, uh, at odd hours of the, of the day, um, and negatively impact their neighbors. And then just a line about permits are required for the installation. So this is just to give us a, a little bit more direction on, on picking apart some language so we can start moving forward in a, in, in, in a direction.
Um, I'd like to make a comment about the non, uh, non-residential at grade. Though within ten feet of a building is not always common. A lot of times what they do is they'll put a generator up by the dumpsters and by transformers and other places. I mean, they might be within ten feet of the building sometimes, but a lot of times I have them off in a corner of a parking lot or other areas of the projects where they're not within ten feet of the building. There's, I betcha one out of three is located someplace about sixty, seventy feet of the building. Um, if that's the case and they're not located within ten feet, then they just need screen walls around it similar to like a dumpster enclosure. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. Um, and again, this was just some jumping off point. We, that's not something that we discussed at, at, in our previous discussions, but, um, that can be changed, that can be modified. This is really just a jumping off point so that we had language to, to look at and pick apart.
Yep.
So one thing I think that we were all in favor of, Aaron, that I noticed was missing from this is, um, some reference to units existing at the time that the ordinance, um, was adopted, that those would, would remain as conforming, um, and that new units could be put in the same place. So I think we definitely all, all agree that that should be in there somewhere. And then I had a question on the, the portion about twelve feet from the adjacent dwelling. So usually, you're right, it is driveway house, driveway house. If for some reason, um, you know, the, the homeowner next door or builder came in and took the home down next door and wanted to put up the house next to the existing house with the air conditioning unit, would that twelve-foot standard prohibit them from doing that? Because it would create a non-conforming situation?
Well, by, by ordinance, we have to have fifteen feet between dwellings.
Okay.
So that, that's another part of the ordinance that, that allows for that to, to, to still be valid without creating a non-conformity.
Okay. What does everyone else think about this then? I thought this was a really good starting point.
I, I agree. It only took us, what, five years?
I agree. The, the only thing I had noted was also the, um, the part about, you know, people who currently have it. Not just a gr- simple grandfather, but there's gotta be better wording to allow them to replace it.
Right, and the only reason I, I mean, I, the only reason I didn't include that is just because by allowing them in the side yard, that is where a lot of these non-conformities would be there. Um, so that's why I didn't include that, but I, I, I totally hear your point and I will make sure that that's added into the, to the next draft.
I, I, my, I guess my last question, can you just explain again the twelve feet from adjacent dwelling? So I'm just thinking about, like, my garage is behind my house. So I, would, would that count, or is it, I, I guess, I'm just confused about that wording, that's all?
Dwelling, that refers to your house, to the principal structure on your property. So it would not, uh, it would not be in reference to, to a garage or any other accessory structure.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, unless it's attached to your, unless your.
Or unless I move out of the garage.
Um, the screening that we're referencing, so if someone has their unit, AC unit in the side yard and has, let's say, a privacy fence, you know, in the rear portion of their yard and a privacy fence along the side portion, that would be sufficient, I would assume, for screening. You wouldn't need to screen just around the unit separately, correct?
Right, so what I was looking at it in terms of screening, so at least on three sides where the house is acting as one side. So then you would want screening along the front, screening along the adjacent, um, where you're facing your neighbors, and then you would have access to, from it, you know, basically from the rear. So that way, if you need to get in there to, to do any maintenance or, or cleaning or, or otherwise, you still have access to it without having to remove a fencing panel or disturbing any, any landscaping that may be growing.
But a, a privacy, a fence around the whole yard, an opaque fence around the entire yard would be sufficient for.
Yes.
For screening, okay. But a chain link fence, then we would require them to do some additional screening.
Correct.
Okay.
Aaron, this is Marty. I have some questions about the non-residential part one at grade. Does this happen much? You know, I'm, I'm, I'm racking my brain, you know, when we do site plans for people, we show these things. And, you know, it's part of the site plan approval, but those are usually new buildings. Is this something that occurs on an existing building very often where they will wanna add a generator? Well, more likely a generator, but even an air conditioner on grade to an existing building?
It doesn't happen all that often. Um, typically those are done, you know, when the building is being built. Um, but it's just a matter of, like, if, if there was a situation where a non-residential developer wanted to put in addition, so they, they've had the generator here right next to their building for twenty years, but now they wanna put an addition there, so they have to relocate it somewhere else.
Okay.
So i- it's kind of trying to anticipate what are the future needs, what are the future projects that are coming through, um, to make sure that we've got everything covered in these, in these ordinances. But for the most part, you know, generators, AC units, those are designed and, and set, uh, when the building is, is built.
Yeah, that's part of the normal site plan approval process.
Yep.
You can see where they wanna put it. Is it, is it, and I, you know, we're, we're here to talk about this. Item two says shall be at least ten feet from a property line. Is it kinda redundant to say we're within ten feet of the principal building? If it's, you know, if, what we're worried about all these things is, you know, imposing upon a neighbor. And if we say it must be ten feet or twelve feet, whatever, whatever we, we, we say for a property line, do we really care where it is on their own site? I'm just asking.
Some, some communities I've worked in have been very specific that they want it right next to the building, so that way it doesn't, um, that way other people don't see it. It's next to the building, people don't see it, but if it's out in the corner, it's, it's not exactly the prettiest thing to look at. Um, so they would rather have landscaping there or, or any other kind of site amenities. Um, in my personal opinion, it, it doesn't matter where it is, as long as it's, um, it has a setback or it has some screening to it.
But that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, so this is just to give you a jumping off point to, to discuss and, and make sure that we've looked at, at every possible situation that we can.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I think quite possibly, uh, we could use item one and two and just strike I, I'm sorry, items one and three and strike item two, you know. Uh, I, I think it's almost redundant, almost. You know, I understand that's what we're here for, so I'd like to hear what everybody else says. But, uh, as long as there X amount of feet from a, a, um, oh, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Uh, strike, uh, item one and just go with item two and three. As long as there are X number of feet, whatever that distance is from a property line, and it's screened, um, I don't, I don't care if it's, I don't care if it's ten, eleven feet or stuck to the side of a principal building. As long as we're, we're here to, we're here to, uh, resolve issues that, uh, impact the neighboring properties. So I don't know if no, item one is even really necessary, but that, you know, I'd like to hear what everybody else says to say.
I would agree with that.
Uh, regarding the screening of it, if you're in a position where you're putting it ten feet from the property line, is acceptable for the screening to be in between that ten feet? Or is it the appliance has to be ten feet from the property line?
The appliance.
Yeah, it says very specifically, the appliance shall be.
I would agree, um, with Marty. I don't know that we need that provision about, let's say, so many feet of a building. As long as it's screened, I think we're, we're good.
Well, the only thing that concerns me is, um, uh, non, non-residential generator, they're generally not very quiet. They can be extremely loud.
Right.
You might wanna put some kind of revision, there must have a sound attenuated enclosure if near residential properties or something, something in there. Pres- you know, sound attenuated enclosure is a very standard item on a generator now.
Right, that's probably a good idea, uh, especially at adjacent to residential properties.
Yes.
And how, how much does that help, Matt? Because I had the pleasure of going up to, um, a building a few weeks ago that had one of those giant generators running, and it was so loud, I could not even hear the person next to me talking.
It depends on the manufacturer. Some generators are fantastic. Um, a good example is go to art speeds and eat, you'll be standing next to a generator, you won't even hear it running. There are generators out there that run extremely quiet, and they do make them. It costs, you know, a couple extra bucks, but it's not a lot to have a sound attenuated enclosure.
And then that, that would help significantly, the sound attenuating enclosure?
That and the screen walls would definitely help. Um, but, uh, I wouldn't get into decibel levels and those kind of things, just basically clarify a sound attenuated enclosure. And that, that alone will make a drastic change to it.
If we needed to, in a situation like that, Aaron, could we still rely on our noise ordinance?
Uh, yes. But the hiccup then becomes, if it's a continued problem, how do we, how do we mitigate that even further? So if there is a generator that's pumping, you know, that's, that's problematic and that's noisy, um, if they have sufficient screening, if they are ten feet from a property line, um, to a certain extent, we've, we've permitted it.
Right, then what?
Right.
Yeah, um, I mean, these would be running infrequently, so I don't wanna overthink things, but that's a really good comment, Matt, thanks.
Generally, that'll test once a month and they only run in power outage situations.
And at that point, it's just gonna be noisy anyways, because there's gonna be people in the neighborhoods running their own portable generators as well.
That's true.
There is a, um, a fairly large generator at the Cataract Surgeons, um, facility on Woodward and Edgewood. It's on the south side of the boulevard between Brookline and, um, Woodward. And I, I think they run it every Saturday morning. Um, so we're out walking the dog and stuff, and it's loud. It's, must be big, or it's fairly big and it's loud. But there's a house backing right up to it. So, uh, and the house was there first. I, you know, I don't, that was before my time, so I don't know what, what happened. But they can be loud, but, um, it runs for ten minutes or whatever on a Saturday morning, and that's it. So. It does happen.
Can we jump back to the residential, um, units? Um, I guess on item three about the screening, I guess I was sort of under the impression on last conversation that's, I wasn't thinking that screening would be necessary. And I think certainly there are situations, um, where screening wouldn't even serve any purpose, like depending on the position of the house. So I guess I, I was sort of thinking that we didn't need screening for those. But, um, I can see what's here would, would work, but, uh, that's just how I recall in my mind what I was thinking, so. I would advocate not having screening in here, for residential.
Were you talking about the AC units?
Yeah, AC or generator, I guess, for both.
Well, the screening is indicated under the AC units in the side yard. Uh, we don't call for anything on the generator to be screened.
Because the generators aren't allowed in the side yard.
That's, that's correct, but we're still not talking about screening them at all, so, um.
Well, Marty, uh, I, I recall that the whole topic of screening came up years ago, strictly in the context of aesthetics. We, we, we didn't want, uh, neighborhoods to start resembling commercial properties with tin boxes, uh, visible from the street. I, I think that was the genesis of the screening, uh, later, discussion later on. Uh, uh, it kind of segued to, uh, you know, noise reduction issue too. But, uh, um, you know, tastes change too. I mean, uh, I guess my impression is that, uh, the people younger than myself don't care too much about looking at a, a tin box, because that's, that's, uh, you know, part of their rite of passage, looking at nothing but tin boxes all the time. I, 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 I don't know, I, but I, but I do, I do believe it's an aesthetic issue. And if there's no aesthetic, there's no consensus on that, I don't know if we should, we should go to the map with it.
Well, it's definitely become part of our everyday environment, you know, our visual environment, much like satellite dishes used to, or maybe still do.
Right, I can remember when they were quite controversial, satellite dishes.
Yeah, yeah, those are like antennas too. You still see those around, like, so, uh, the TV antenna. I, I guess again, I, I was thinking both of those didn't need screening, in my opinion. Kind of been surveying neighborhoods and I've seen both and they both look fine, I guess. And then the corner lots too, with my other question, I don't know if those are just separately or not, because like a lot of times on a corner, you, you have two sides, so it, it, I guess, I, I, if there are separate rules for corner lots would be my other question, Aaron.
Um, I didn't put any different restrictions on a corner lot. Um, they would certainly meet the twelve feet from any adjacent building or adjacent dwelling. Um, eighteen inches from the side property line and then, and then screening. So I didn't, uh, I didn't, I didn't add any additional or different restrictions for a corner lot, no. Um.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking on the generator, actually. Uh, because it only says rear, but like on some corner lots, I, it seems situated where it's not any sort of hindrance, and I don't wanna get into sort of, like, you know, specific properties and like, you know, just ordinance for one, but, um, it sort of seemed though, I guess, I'm thinking it, I would be acceptable to me for a look and not bother anybody, so.
For the generator to be in a se- in this.
I- in the side yard in general too.
On a corner?
Yeah.
Julie, did you have something?
Yeah, I think, I spoke on the screening last meeting, but I was speaking on screening of generators. Um, hopefully allowing them in the side yard versus just the backyard. So like Joe, I don't know that the screening on an air conditioner was what I was talking about at the last meeting. And I don't know how that, if that's how this got in here or not. Um, that was, that's all.
So I do think we were talking about screening at the last meeting, and there was kind of a, we wanna make sure the screening is not more obtrusive than the unit itself. Um, I think that was kind of the concern that was being batted around a little bit. Personally, I think this, this works fine with requiring screening. I don't think, I, I don't think the screening would be worse than seeing the AC unit, and I think it would be easy to do if it's only on three sides. Um, you know, a lot of people have privacy fences anyways, or at least some landscaping along their side property line that would, that would take care of this and along the front property line, I think that's pretty common too. Um, I would be opposed to having generators in the side yard of a corner lot, because that's basically then the front yard of what you're seeing as you're walking down the street. You know, if someone is, like I'm thinking of, near me, um, you know, we have houses that are fronting on Catalpa, but when I'm walking down my street, Tyler, you know, their side yard is basically the, the front yard of Tyler. Does that make sense? So I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna see a generator as I'm walking down my street and approaching Catalpa, and there's the corner house, and they have a big side yard, and I, I don't think I wanna see a generator there necessarily. Because they have to be a little bit farther from the house, is that right? Cause they have to be a little bit farther from the house, is that right?
That's much.
Not farther, but they're larger and they're louder, they're, they're not necessarily farther from the house. You may need a little more clearance for maintenance.
That's what I guess I missed, yeah, so would you out more, I think, um, yeah, I, I would, I would not be in favor of that for corner lots.
Yeah, I guess the, the situation I'm thinking of, which again, it's just because it's near me, is it's, it's when someone's back, it's when the houses are oriented different on side streets, so they're perpendicular to each other. So someone's backyard is someone else's side yard for many, many houses on streets when they tee in, when they tee into each other. So I just don't see why it wouldn't be allowed on that person's side yard, because it's literally someone else's backyard that's there. And their garage, like garages, and you know, all, all, all sorts of things are, are there. So, I don't know how you carve that out, if, if that's our intent, you know, if, then that's where I'm coming from. So if it's allowed in that side yard, to me, it seems like it would sort of be okay anywhere, but, because they know, they have like a special situation going on with their side yards, so.
And maybe if there are situations that make more sense, where are the generators in the side yard on some, some of the types of things you're talking about, Joe, maybe that's the, the proper place for the zoning board of appeals to come in and say, well, because of the way that the houses are situated, this is a unique situation and therefore we grant a variance or however they decide to choose, but that might be the, the avenue for that.
And I think the rooftop one on the non residential is great, Erin, um. The only other situation I was thinking about for, um, being visible from street level, um, do we, is there any other, is street lo- street level the only concern for visibility? Um, and I guess I'm sort of thinking if there's, um, neighbors that can see, but they're, they're more elevated or something like that in a different way, not necessarily from a second floor, but, um, and I don't even know if you can, we can define something screened from all visible angles, if that even makes sense, but, but, um, I think that it's, it's very succinct and to the point what's there.
Well, a lot of communities require any rooftop unit to be completely screened. So, you know, not just from street level, but, uh, uh, you know, if the, if the, uh, uh, say the unit's four feet tall, it's on a twelve inch curb, it's five feet above the roof, the parapet's eighteen inches high, whatever. The, the top of the screening must be at least as tall as the highest point on any rooftop unit. That's what a lot of communities, uh, uh, say, Berkeley hasn't been real, uh, you know, uh, we haven't been real strong on when someone adds a rooftop unit requiring it to be screened. In fact, some of the new, some of the new structures, if, if the, the planning commissioner have been here, we, we really haven't. Uh, we just did one today, they're gonna, they're gonna get rid of that chimney and put a rooftop unit on their, uh, on their building, we didn't say anything about screening it. So that's not something that we've really, uh, pushed, and as it's come up before, sometimes the screen brings more attention to the, uh, the unit than the unit itself, cause they get very massive.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking on the Google Earth image for vibe credit union and I can see the unit on top, from the street view there. But I mean, it's very minimal, I, I mean, I guess if it's shrouded in something, I would, you know, you would see that instead, but, um, but it, you know, maybe it would, it would be more aesthetically matching the building ultimately, so.
In new construction, definitely, I, I don't know about existing, and the problem with, um, you know, I didn't bring it up, uh, but, you know, the first, the first item tonight, uh, on, um, just north of the vibe, the, uh, the retail building, you know, they're bracing their front raised parapet back to the roof, and they're also gonna be adding a rooftop unit on the roof. That's a very old building, probably a wood roof construction. I didn't say anything, but I'm not sure that their roof construction can handle that, the, the wind loads. Uh, you know, pushing back on that, uh, that diagonal bracing, however they're gonna do it. So it is a problem adding screens to existing buildings. We're going off into the weeds here a little bit, but, uh, you know, these are, these are just discussions, so, um, I think it, I think it's written, the, as far as the rooftop, uh, I think that's written fairly well, we're not telling them that they have to build big giant sails up there and have to be able to, have to reinforce their roof and everything, we're just telling them that, uh, you know, we want it to be, not be visible from the street level, I think that's fair, in my humble opinion.
Uh, this is Mark, getting back to residential and the proposal to delete sub one there. Um, is there any potential problem with, say, uh, i- if we say it can go right, right up to the side, uh, property line, given that it's remains a proper twelve feet from the dwelling, the adjacent dwelling, if, if we say that, um, i- is there creating potential problems for, say, homeowners who, who want to erect a fence, uh, later on, or, um, you know, work, uh, close to their own property line? Is there any potential for interfering with that work, uh, by allowing, uh, AC units right up to the property line? I, I just, uh, I don't wanna, I just, I'm throwing that out there, is that something we need to think about?
I don't remember talking about deleting one on the residential. Um, I think the eighteen inches from a side property line is fine, for that very reason, someone wants to put up a fence. All of a sudden, if they put up an opaque fence, um, there, the, the, the neighbor's air conditioning unit doesn't have any air clearances, so I think the eight inches, if that's what you're referring to, Mark.
Well, I may have misunderstood your, what your suggestion Marty was, uh, you had, uh,
No, it's non residential, remove item.
Non residential, pardon.
Yeah, will be within ten feet of the principal building, I thought that was redundant, I think we're more concerned about how it relates to a neighbor's property line.
Okay, my bad.
Does that give you enough to go on at this point, Erin?
Yes, I think so. So, like I said last time, uh, for, when we discussed projections, we, this isn't meant to be setting a public hearing right now. This still needs a lot of work, uh, to be done, but, uh, um, this will come back to you in, at the December fifteenth meeting and we can flesh it out a bit more there, so we'll be adding language about existing units can continue. Uh, we'll be striking, uh, number one, um, related to the upgrade for non residential units. Um, we're looking at the, uh, sound inundating enclosures for, um, non residential units adjacent to residential. Um, and just to clarify, we're, we're still good with separating, on the residential, separating the generators from the AC units into, where generators are now out in the side yard and AC units are, are we still comfortable with that?
I am, I am.
I am.
To me, it doesn't matter, I, I mean, I'm, I, I'm tor- it doesn't really matter to me, I feel like the, the generators are sometimes, I, how much bigger are they than an AC unit, like twice the size maybe, or? I don't know.
It's on the unit, and I think sometimes they look nicer than AC units.
From the pictures, they do.
They do, I mean, they're a cleaner.
They, they look like a toy box to me or something, like they're, they're concealed, but.
They look like a deck box to me, like a storage box, so.
Uh, uh, I mean, either way to me.
So instead of talking about screening them, we should be comparing the aesthetic value of generators and AC unit.
You got five more years to talk about this? Now, Erin, I think you've come a long way on this and we're just, this is one of those things that just gets beat to death month after month, year after year, but I think we're getting, we're making a lot of progress here.
Have, have, do, what about the screening, like I don't mind if it has a screen around it or not either. Um, I'm with Joe on that, so. I, if we have a fence or, or not, I mean, I think most of us, it's an air conditioning unit, like we know what it is, it's why try to, like, I don't have a privacy fence around my house, so I would have to put a fence literally around three sides of my air conditioner?
Well, you could put some, one, one side is your house, right?
Yeah.
One side, and then if in the, if in your backyard, do you have any plants or anything?
No, mine's in my side yard, in my, almost, almost to my, like driveway, so I would put literally two pieces of fence up and be done with it, but.
I mean, you could, or you could have bushes, a, a lot of people I think already have the screening in place, cause they either have a fence or they have some sort of plantings. You know, somewhere along their property lines.
I, I would have to measure, but I don't even know, my air conditioner might be taller than four feet. Does that seem normal to you guys? My air conditioner be tall like that, or?
I've seen really tall skinny ones before.
That's kind of ominous, so.
It is really tall. Um, when we were talking about screening, I didn't think it, I thought it was more for like a sound with the generator. So, I'm with you on the screening of an air conditioner, you don't know how much, I don't know how necessary it is. Because it's not a noise thing, it's an aesthetic thing, but I was speaking of screening for a generator so we can get them in the side yard, because it really does block the noise.
I don't think it hurts though to have the screening provision in there.
Maybe we could just come back and revisit this the next time we talk about it, what do you think? You know? If that's our only remaining issue, you ought to be able to resolve that the next time. So leave it in, I, I think, leave it in for now and, uh, let's take it up next time, is my suggestion.
That sounds fine to me, I mean, if we're down to just this one thing, then I think we're good.
It looks like we are. We can always dream up more issues though, between now and then, can't we?
Okay, so we're good then, Erin, yes?
Yep, so this will come back to you on the fifteenth with some, um, some slight modifications, some slight changes. Um, and then we can continue to discuss and pick it apart.
Okay, um, so that's all of our agenda items as far as, as new things, next we have liaison reports. So, um, Erin had already mentioned council approved the second reading of the parking modification and those site plan review procedure modifications we'd done as well. And also approved the first reading of the permeable pavement ordinance. Any other people with liaison reports?
Uh, this is Mark from, um, environmental committee, uh, we did meet, uh, uh, and, um, the major, uh, uh, topic on our agenda was, uh, in the idea of a community garden. And, um, uh, one of our committee members has identified a potential partner for the, uh, uh, location of the garden, and, uh, we're looking at, uh, a portion of the Lasalle property. Uh, this would be south, on the south side of, uh, um, Harvard. Um, to the east of the, um, uh, condos, the, the Harvard Common Condos and, um, so, uh, we're, we're going to, uh, going to, uh, take that back to, uh, the, the gentleman that's representing Lasalle on this and, and we're going to, uh, try to come up with a, a plan that would involve, uh, the city helping to develop that community garden, it's really quite a, a large site. And, um, uh, we need to, we need to look at details of, you know, how it's going to be run and et cetera, but, um, we wanted to, uh, we wanted to, uh, we wanted that amenity, uh, it seemed like there was a lot of interest expressed, uh, on our Facebook page and, and in the community generally. So, uh, we're going to go, uh, ahead with that idea. Um, and then, uh, we, we did, uh, we did talk a little bit about, uh, the, um, energy efficiency plan. And we also talked, uh, quite extensively about the recommendations for, um, uh, green infrastructure, um, that, uh, Dr. Carpenter presented to the, the, uh, a city council a few months ago, and, um, uh, I think the consensus of our committee was that, uh, Dr. Carpenter's suggestion are a good template, but we don't necessarily, um, uh, want to limit ourselves to just the sites that he identified. Uh, we want to look for some, um, additional potential sites that might offer more in a way of, uh, of, um, uh, uh, stormwater, uh, uh, detention and is it detention or retention? I think it's, uh, retention that I'm talking about.
Two, there, there's both actually.
Yeah, um, so, uh, we're going to, uh, continue to look into that and identify some potential additional sites, I hope. These would have to be city owned properties, um, uh, but, uh, uh, you know, they could be parking lots, they could be boulevards, they could be, um, uh, a portion of, of existing parkland. Uh, um, in line with Carpenter's, uh, uh, Carpenter's, uh, uh, suggestions, so, um, that's my report on, on environmental and we'll be meeting again in January.
Mark?
Mark, regarding your, uh, partner we were gonna be working with, he is going to Ireland for a few months and then moving out of Berkeley. I don't know what kind of participation you're gonna get anymore.
Um, you, you know who the gentleman is then?
Uh, it was Oolong, he's, uh, one of the people who owns a massage therapy place over on, um, Coolidge, just south of 12th.
I'm struggling to remember the name that we were bandying around, uh, but, uh, I will, I will take that up with Jessica. Uh, our committee member who's been in touch with, um, that person and, uh, it's not the only potential site either, but, uh, since we had some e- expression of interest from the owner, uh, of, of the property, we thought it best to pursue that, at least for now.
Okay. Um, I knew to attend the DDA meeting this month, uh, it was rather uneventful, they did discuss the upcoming sites, uh, the signage for the city that's going in, the wayfinding, uh, that's, some of it's supposed to be installed in the next few weeks, so they'll be popping up in our community.
I attended the chamber of commerce meeting, um, and it was, it pretty much discussed distributing PPE to chamber members for most of the meeting, which they will be doing in the next month. That was about it.
Okay, thanks for the updates, everyone. Um, Commissioner and staff comments, um, Commissioner Smith, anything for the group? Commissioner Patterson?
Happy, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, Commissioner Carpenter?
Just happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Stern?
No, happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Bartis?
Um, the only thing is, I, I don't know if Erin's gonna touch upon this, but the, um, the master plan steering committee, I think there are some workshops that are set up, um, the dates at least, and um, I don't recall what those dates were, but working with us, um, so, but other than that, um, that's it, happy Thanksgiving too.
And we have our first work session coming up soon, right, Erin?
Yes, um, our first work session, we've got some scheduled for the next four, four months. So the first one will be December first, twenty twenty, it'll be a virtual, uh, discussion. And the agenda and the packet materials will be coming out to you, um, probably tomorrow.
That's next, uh, Monday, Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Okay.
And then our next planning commission meeting is December fifteenth.
Uh, Commissioner Richardson, anything for the group?
Nothing further.
And Commissioner Totto? Okay.
Sorry about that, um, everybody, thank you, thank you, sorry, I won't be here next month as I said, but have a good Thanksgiving and hopefully I see you guys before the next Christmas holiday.
And I don't have anything, um, additional to add. And I don't have anything, um, additional to add either, looking forward to that, uh, work session. Aaron, did you have anything else?
Nope, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Same to you, same to everybody.
Hi, everyone.
And that brings us to adjourn. Any motions?
Motion to adjourn.
For it.
Aaron, could you call the roll?
Dern?
Yes.
Trotto?
Yes.
Bardas?
Yes.
Kepner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kepelansky?
Yes.
Great, have a good holiday, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.